Is Paul out there? I can't see him.
I did not see him, so if he if he joined us a little bit, I'll I'll flag him for you.
I don't see him on.
Okay. Bob Kozlowski Controller, could you introduce yourself, please?
I am Bob Kozlowski Controller. Look forward to your comments.
Is Marty with us tonight? Marty Lawler, Town Council?
No, Marty can't join us tonight. He had a conflict.
Okay. The reps for the Board of Ed, Melanie, Dr. Carver, Terry, could you please introduce yourself?
Hi, everyone. Christine Carver. I look forward also look forward to your comments tonight. Superintendent of schools.
And Melanie O'Brien, Chair of the Board of Education, and I'm also appreciative of your joining us tonight, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Teri Yansky, Director of Fiscal Services for the Bethel Board of Education, and thank you for joining us on the Zoom.
Now for the Board of Finance, I may try to do this in alphabetic order, just given given the number of folks, so maybe start with Nick.
Good evening, everyone. Nick Ellis from Bethel, a Board of Finance member. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Delene.
Hi, everyone. Delene Foster, Board of Finance member, and we appreciate you joining us virtually.
Karen.
Karen Foster, Finance, and this is my first town meeting on this side of the table, so I'm looking forward to hearing from everyone. Thank you.
Cynthia.
Cynthia Corkendale, Board of Finance member. And thank you for joining us. It's well, we had a Zoom public hearing before, but this one looks like it's going to be more animated. That's great.
Robert.
Robert Palmer, Board of Finance. I'm Robert as opposed to Bob Kozlowski or Bob Manfreda, so I I claim the title of Robert. As this distinction.
Brian.
Brian Turzian, Board of Finance. I just want to thank everyone who's coming out to participate and give us your input.
Okay, and I am Bob Manfred. I'm the Chair of the Board of Finance and just echoing all the prior speakers. Thank you, members of public, for joining us tonight. A little bit of of setup here. The budget process has three important events to it. The public hearing, the annual town meeting, and the town referendum. So tonight, the public hearing is the first step in those three important meetings. And the goal is to develop and to approve a budget for the fiscal year 2022. So the year that begins July 1st, 2021, and runs through June 30th, 2022. The annual town meeting will be held on Monday, April 5th. It will be an in-person meeting in the Bethel High School Field House. The town referendum, the third and final step in the budget process, is scheduled for Tuesday, April 20th. With respect to the town referendum, folks will vote at their normal polling places. And so as we talked right tonight, the public hearing is the first step in in this process. We, the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, we need your input. We we want your input. So let's get to that quickly. And and before we do it, we'll go through a couple of quick slides or go through some slides quickly just to kind of give an overview as to what this Board of Finance proposal is that we are asking you to come. So Matt, it's the third page in presentation. Okay, this is a format that I think all of you have seen before. Certainly, folks who have been involved in Bethel budgets have seen this before. The town's budget is broken down into these four categories: Town Operating, Board of Ed Operating, Board of Ed Maintenance, and then Debt Service. At the referendum, three of these accounts will be put together as total town side. That's the Town Operating, the the Board of Ed Maintenance, and the Debt Service. And then the Board of Ed Operating will be shown separately. Within the Town Operating Budget, there are 34 departments. So clearly, right, there's 37 in total. The 34 departments which are in the Town Operating, the Department 450, the Department 460, and the Department 440 that you see here. Whoops. Thank you. And so the numbers are 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 here. I won't go through the whole chart. You see that overall, right, bottom right hand of this chart, you'll see the year-over-year increase in spending. This is the spending side of the equation that we go through to find out what the tax impact will be. So a 2.62% overall increase in spending. So Matt, would I'm sorry, just before before we get to the next slide, I do want to touch on two departments that are in the Town Operating Budget. And the I I want to make a quick comment on these two because I actually received questions on on those these two departments. First is the Department 380, Park and Recreation. You'll see when we get into the detail, this Board of Finance is proposing a $100,000 reduction in the Park and Rec Program account. We we want to be clear that the intent of the Board of Finance is not to reduce the programs that the department will offer during the fiscal year. The 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 questions that I got came along the lines of, what are you doing? You know, this is people are going to need these programs. The response was, yes, we understand that. Our goal, though, is to avoid what happened last year. What happened last year was that we budgeted for a regular year. Again, COVID didn't agree with us, and we ended up putting in the budget. You all paid for services that were program services. Again, COVID unforeseen, nobody's fault, but we were not able to run those programs. So you all, as taxpayers of Bethel, were billed for, and you paid for services that weren't rendered. So we want to avoid that happen happening this year. There's still plenty of money in the Programs Account for Eileen and King to run many of the early programs. In fact, there's still almost $400,000 in that account. What we did by reducing the number by 100,000 was to say, you know, there's still some uncertainty about COVID. Let's see what happens during the challenging period of the winter months. And if Eileen comes back to us to say, I can run the programs, then this Board of Finance, I'm confident, speaking on behalf of the Board of Finance, that this board would then work to get the additional $100,000 revenue for or or funding for the programs. So again, just want to make sure that if people are concerned about parking rec programs being cut, that's not the intention. The intention is to avoid what happened last year, the the billing, the payment, the non-provision of the services because of COVID. Second, second department, I want to touch on just very quickly, the Board of Ed Maintenance, got a phone call saying, what are you doing? We've got all these nice buildings. We've got new buildings or buildings being renovated. This is not the time to reduce Board of Ed Maintenance. We agree, we can, the intent of this board is to fund the same amount of Board of Ed Maintenance. However, we will fund $100,000 of the Board of Ed Maintenance from what is referred to as the 1% fund that is set up each year within the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed, in particular, Melanie, Dr. Carver, Terry, has agreed to work with the Board of Finance to use the funds, or at least some of the funds, in that account to the extent of $100,000 to, in effect, just use a second source of funding for the Board of Ed Maintenance. I just, Matt, can you now flip to the next page, please? This is just a quick overview. One of the major drivers to the increase in the spending, it's pretty simple. Increase in salaries and benefits at the Board of Ed, increase in salaries and benefits at the town, and then debt service. Huge increase in debt service. This is something we expected. We approved a police station. We approved improvements to the renovations to both Rockwell and Johnson. The debt is starting to come on full load. This is not a surprise. We knew this was coming. This Board of Finance actively managed the debt load to keep the the increase as low as possible. And so this increase is was known, it was, it's been managed, but you can see it still has a significant impact on the increase to the overall. So Matt, would you mind flipping to the next page? Thank you. And then this is the effect on taxes page. Again, we get a lot of questions. Well, okay, I understand spending, but what does it mean to me? And and taxes, the mill rate, is a function of not only spending, but but revenue. And so when we look to the non-tax revenue and the spending, the 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 plug figure, the the figure that balances that is taxes. And so what we show here is the current mill rate, 33.74. The estimated mill rate, should this proposal be accepted, it would go up to 34.38. So the increase in the mill rate is 0.64. That is a percentage increase in mill rate of 1.9. So what we wanted to, what we wanted to do by showing this slide is to ground the numbers that you might hear. You might hear a 2.62% increase. That's a valid number. It's an increase in the spending. And then you may hear about a 1.9% increase in tax or mill rate. That that's what this slide is telling us. So Matt, would you mind going to the next page, please? Again, a data point that we're asked a lot is, well, what's it mean to me? What does a 1.9% increase in taxes mean to me? Well, if a person has a house with a market value of 210,000, this proposal would increase the person's annual taxes by $94 or $7.84 a month. On the other hand, other end of the spectrum, the house has a market value of 510,000. That would mean a a increase year-over-year of 218,000 or $19.04 a month. And last page, please, Matt? Thank you. That that again, that's a quick overview of where this proposal is coming out, hopefully some important data points that people often ask us about. And now we'd like to get to what is the the real crux of tonight's meeting, getting your all's import input on this proposal. We do have a few asks of folks. We do ask that comments be limited to five minutes or less. We will have an official timer. That's going to be Karen Foster. A for a a warning will be given at 4 minutes and 30 seconds. At 5 minutes, we have the ability to mute the the speaker, at which point they'll be muted. And we'll put the person who is talking back in the queue so that we can be considerate of the folks who are behind that person in speaking. We have the Zoom, the second point here, we have the Zoom feature. Raise your hand virtually. Well, Dion, I believe, is going going to monitor the queue and and have people speak in the order in which they enter it. Folks will be recognized. What we will ask each individual to do is to state their name and their address, and then make their comments, ask their questions. I would ask the folks if they have questions to direct them to me, again, on the Roberts rules and and an attempt to make a what looks to be in excess of 100-person Zoom meeting, try to run as efficiently as possible. So with that, Matt, if you wouldn't mind taking down this last page.
You just announced the dates for the special town meeting and the referendum again.
Sure. The annual town meeting is Monday, April 5th. Bethel Field House. The town referendum is Tuesday, April 20th.
Thanks.
So Dion, to the extent you could maybe start asking.
Yes, so we have Billy Michaels first. So you're going to need to unmute. I'm not.
Well, while we're waiting for Billy, I I see a question in the chat that I think will probably come up often. And that is, will there be a way to attend the town meeting virtually? At this time, we are not planning to do that. We run into an awful lot of logistical problems in registering voters, making sure that only legal voters and legal.
Come the video.
So we're we're planning, we're planning to use the the big track and field training center because it's large enough that over 200 people could space out and be apart from one another, like far more than the the minimum six feet. So that's the plan so far.
Am I on here?
Yes.
You're ready.
Okay, thank you. I am appalled.
So what's your address, Bill?
2027 and a half Fleetwood Avenue.
Thank you.
For this to be the civic discourse, for towards we sitting in these screens and to see this little box come up and give me a little line on a piece, I would, I I remember when citizens got something like this. You can't see this. There's 86. This is the Board of Education budget that we would see. Citizen, the citizenry of the town would see the Board of Education budget with 86 different lines in it of published in the paper. And we want, we we make fun of 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 the flip phone people. We're in a flip, Bethel's in a flip phone world and a age of the the whatever your phones, you call them. But we used to know stuff. We had information in the in the long ago. And to for us to be talking about a budget where you see this little tiny line and we're supposed to know stuff from this, this is we have debilitated this whole civic discourse on on the on the the budget. I want, and I I've got two other things. The estimated revenues, I know Cynthia was trying to get revenue since February 22nd. Everybody talks about the spending. It's the revenues. The revenues is the amount of money torn away from people, from your your car owners, your business owners, and your 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 property owners. The locally derived revenue is the real pain of a budget. And it took a month to get these numbers. This is the first time we've seen these numbers right before the meeting. When I look at the 71,137 proposed, estimated against the revised 68,749 number. Now, Bob Kozlowski can do this because I'm no mathematic man, but it looks like it's over, it's almost 3.5% increase in your revenue from locally derived sources. Then I'm looking at your 1.9% mill rate and the 2.6% spending increase, but your locally derived revenue is over a 3.5%. And generally speaking, from the 30 years I've been going to these meetings and looking at the the last year's information, the revenue generally presented in at a public hearing in a town meeting is lower than it actually is received in the subsequent years. So I think the problem from for me as a taxpayer advocate is you have too much money. A 3.5% increase in revenue from locally derived sources, then this goes on year after year. When you think of 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 the of the the sense of apartheid we have, I'm a nonessential person now. I become nonessential the last year. My job was taken away, and you have two classes of citizens now. You have those protected with government jobs, government benefits, protected with up up pay increases. We have, I remember the year that Matt had to voluntarily take out a $5,000 increase because it was such a sore spot in the budget. The budget was defeated, what, three times? I remember, I remember Matt saying, I'm going to, the the Office of the Selectmen, we're going to take out the $5,000 raise. I know that there's raises, probably, there's more than that. And for school personnel, administrators, where's all this? The one percenters and the social justice and equity, when you have people getting raised thousands of dollars of raises while other people, their jobs are deemed nonessential. It it and then, and the the last thing I want to get, so so I'm against the budget. I don't want any more of I I'm against any new positions because next year, you're going to have a little chart and it's going to say, these are, you know, negotiated salaries. There's nothing we can do about it. Well, it's because every year we add people. What do we have? 550 town employees, about over 400 in the Board of Ed. You got to have at least about 150 on the town side. And correct me if I'm wrong, somebody knows how many town employees there are. Do we have a number on that?
125.
525?
125.
Added to how many in the Board of Ed? Mr. Carver, do you know how many members?
I believe the number is 513.
No, 513 employees for the Board of Ed?
And that includes everybody, Billy, right, Terry?
So you are 513, and then Bob just said the town say has 100 and what?
125 full-time employees.
My God, and you keep adding them, adding. It's the biggest business in the world is the government of Bethel, not the private sector. So I'm against any new 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 positions. And 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 I'm also again, I'm appalled about how the revenues, the revenues are not are not brought out with enough time. And in the budget process, the Board of Finance is not presented with the through the charter. The charter stipulates revenues have to be presented. There's a three times since the Nick or Bacher administration where revenues, but this, no, two times that were presented at the town meeting or public hearing. And I made a big stink about that because it's so important for the citizenry to know the revenues.
Billy, please, please, please wrap up, please.
I'm wrapping up. I'm against this budget. I'm against the increase. I hate the 3.4% increase in locally derived revenue increase. It's too much to be pulled out.
But I I normally don't, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I I normally don't respond, but there was a factual incorrect statement that I want to highlight. Two things, actually. These numbers, the revenue numbers, have been part of the discussion for months. I'll just leave it at that, right? They've been in the department presentations, and they've been discussed in a number of a number of Board of Finance meetings. So I just want to make sure that factually people understand that these numbers have been there. Now, if folks don't, you know, people are busy. They can't sit in meetings. They can't listen to tapings, but the information is there. And I I do want to address the charter point. The charter doesn't require detailed analysis of the revenue unless the Board of Finance requests a separate analysis. That separate analysis was required, was requested and given during the deliberation. So I just want to factually correct that misstatement. So so thank you. Okay, next speaker, please, Dion.
I just want a point of information, please. That that actually the correct number of employees for the Board of Ed is not 513. It's what I heard was 401.53 full-time equivalents. Is that correct, Christine?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was I was thinking about it in terms of the vaccinations, and there was, there was also coaches and other things, so I want to apologize.
But maybe you went on a spree.
So I can give you a little further information, Cynthia. Yes, full-time equivalents in the Board of Education operating budget is 403.03 versus last year, 401.53. There are a few more employees that are covered by grants. So if you look at the annual financial statement, I believe you'll see a number. I'd have to look exactly, but it's right around 444.
All right, and we have Pat Morton next.
All right, Pat Morton, number two, Canaan Drive. I'm Chairman of the Park and Rec Commission, and I'm here to speak on behalf of our Parks and Rec Commission and Parks Recreation Department. We are aware of the cuts made to our department and feel it is imperative for us to speak here tonight. We understand that COVID-19 affected not only our ability to run programming, but the community at large. But today in 2021, our department, our department is excited and looking forward to move ahead with a full and active schedule. Park and Rec Department feels we can help all Bethel citizens recover from the past year of COVID. Parks and Recreation have planned the following. Full programs for both spring and summer sessions, including basketball, day camp, sports camps, and many more. It's important to note that since the beginning of school, all of our offered programs have seen a consistent increase in numbers. While we have been under strict guidelines for quarantining and social distancing, we are now beginning to reopen, which will provide a much-needed service to our community. Residents of all ages are eager eager to participate in the activities we provide. We're expecting little to no restrictions come this fall and the future months ahead. The loss of the funding of this, of the programming account of $100,000 and the uncertainty of this funding being restored at a later date will have a significant impact on the 2021 fall and winter programs. And it will delay necessary preparations that preparations and the required planning. The loss of $100,000 will reduce our income by $120,000, which would offset the mill rate. Thank you for the let us just letting us speak tonight.
Thank you. Next, Dion, do you have? You're muted, Dion.
Sorry about that. If somebody would like to speak, will you please raise your hand? If you want to raise your hand, if you go over to your name and it says more, it will give you the option to raise your hand. Okay, we've got Dana. Dana, you're going to need to unmute.
Hi, hello, good evening. My name is Dana Fallon. I live on a 10 Water Horse Brook Drive in in Bethel.
I'm sorry, water what?
Water Horse.
Thank you.
10 Little Street. I'm a teacher. I live in a neighboring district, and I just wanted to speak up for the the town budget and the Board of Ed budget. And I just want to remind people that, first of all, the people who serve at the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance are doing it free as volunteer work, so thank you for your service. I also would like to ask you to do whatever you can to allow the the Zoom participation for the next meetings because it is, I get up very early in the morning. I have to teach at high school. And it's very helpful to be able to attend remotely. And the other thing is, I really do want to support the budgets. I want to remind people that everything costs money, that the people who are doing these jobs are working really hard to do these jobs. The T, the the teachers are teaching children, the people are, you know, repairing the roads. All the stuff needs to get done. It can't be taken for granted. People who are doing these jobs are living in town. They're paying their mortgages. They're paying taxes. They're employing local tradespeople. They're shopping at the local food stores. They're going to local restaurants. All that money that is being paid to people is not money that's gone. It's money that is that stays here and circulates in the local economy. So so please keep that in mind when you think about the money being spent, that it is being circulated in the local economy. It's not gone. It gets paid to other people who are in Bethel, so that is all I want to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Dion, do we have another?
We have anybody else that would like to speak? Rob, okay, Rob.
Hi there. So thanks, thank you to the staff and the volunteer board members for your hard work on this.
Rob, can I need you to just tell me your address?
Oh, sorry. It's One Topstone Drive?
Thank you.
Yep. I think you've all done a good job on a practical budget in a difficult year under different circumstances, difficult circumstances. I just wanted to thank everybody for that. Just a couple questions. Actually, first on the tennis courts. I saw the nets were put back up and they're new nets this month, which is which is exciting. The surfaces of the tennis courts have some, I think they were resurfaced maybe 10 years ago, and they've developed some some fissures and some cracks, and they probably need some resurfacing and some maintenance to to prevent it from getting worse. I don't think they've been maintained very well since they were originally installed, so just wanted to know what the plans were for those courts so that so that we're not spending money on resurfacing and then not maintaining and so causing problems with them down the road. Also, just wanted to talk. Also, just wanted to talk a little about our sidewalk grid. Obviously, as everybody knows, a huge amenity for Bethel is the fact that we have a very activated downtown with a robust sidewalk grid that extends far out from the, um, commercial core, so seeing a lot of folks walking and, and running. Good, good way to exercise, especially during a pandemic. But we have portions of sidewalks that are, that really are like trip hazards, and it encourages runners in particular to have to step into the road to avoid things where they might slip or, um, twist an ankle. And I know about 15 years ago or so that the town had sought, I think, some grant money to redo some of the sidewalks, which was good. But it was a little bit haphazard, the way that it was done. In some cases, there were portions of a sidewalk in front of a property where portions of it were replaced, but other portions weren't. Um, so I think the time has come again to, to, to look at that again and, and just see, what the options might be for, for furthering that work. So that's it. Just wanted to thank everybody and just raise that about the sidewalks and the tennis courts.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay, we have Greg Henry next, but just let me explain. If you want to raise your hand on your, at the top right hand of your screen, if you hover over it, you'll see three dots. If you click on that, you should see where you can, where you have the option to raise your hand. All right, Greg, you need to unmute. All right, Greg.
How's that? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Greg Henry, thirty-seven Taylor Road. Good evening. As a resident of Bethel for virtually my entire adult life, I wanted to take a moment and speak in opposition to the proposed $100,000 reduction in the Park and Recreation Budget. This cut was proposed and moved forward by the Board of Finance, specifically targeting the program's line of the budget. Whether you're a newer resident of Bethel or a longtime member of the community, I'm quite sure that you've seen the quarterly program offering brochure that is distributed to the residents. The broad spectrum of programming that is offered is a testament, testament to the commitment that this department has to the residents of Bethel. Program offerings begin with preschool age classes and all the way up, go all the way up to adult classes. Some examples of these programs for this spring are adult art, yoga, kickboxing, Pilates, preschool education, physical activity classes, two theater productions scheduled for this upcoming summer. Sports, tennis from ages three to sixteen, year-round partnership with US Sports, offering a wide range of sports camps and clinics from ages two to eleven, and an outdoor basketball skills development clinic. These past 12 months have been extremely difficult on all of us, especially the youth of our community. They have been isolated and forced to socialize in very unnatural ways. When I look back on my childhood, I couldn't imagine having to sacrifice all that our children have had to. Now, as our country is on a slow and steady path to normalcy, we're contemplating balancing a budget on the backs of our children. They need socialization, they need physical activity, they need to be able to run, laugh, and just be kids. Shame on us for building any, any barriers for that to occur. Although it has been stated that additional funding would be made available, the history of resistance when it comes to budgetary requests in the town of Bethel makes me highly suspect this would be guaranteed. Mental health professionals, social workers, and overwhelmed parents are all in agreement that our kids will be requiring more programming, not less. The Board of Finance and its members can't possibly be more qualified than those that I have mentioned to make the determination that programming will not be in high demand. I've searched very hard for any research that supports the contrary. I'm on the Board of the Bethel Baseball Association, and if the springtime registrations are any indication, there is no hesitancy from the community when it comes to signing up their children for activities. Two hundred and fifty youth baseball players are signed up and will hit the fields within the next few weeks. This is a comparable number to recent spring signups, again indicating the demand is present. I'll leave you with this. Yesterday at 2:00 PM, I counted seventy-two cars at McCowherd Park. That in itself should be enough to indicate that there is no hesitancy from our, our residents to socialize and exercise. I urge the Board of Finance to reconsider this reduction in funding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dion, next.
Now we have Nancy Ryan. Nancy, you just need to unmute.
Okay, I think we're ready to go here. I'm Nancy Ryan, twenty-five Walnut Hill Road. Just a few comments, but first I'd like to thank the Board of Finance, the Board of Education, First Selectmen, and all others for the hard work that they put into putting together a budget, I think, that is mostly acceptable to, um, to me and to a lot of other people. And just a couple of comments. I know it's not the program part of Park and Rec, but I gotta give a big shout out to the Park and Rec Department for how they most immediately stepped in initially a year ago when we had the COVID shutdown and when we had to start putting all kinds of protocols in place at the municipal center and a lot of the other town buildings, parks, et cetera, et cetera. They became the go-to people when supplies were needed, and they kept, helped us keep a lot of things up and running as best they could. Between them and Tom Galliford EMS and the Health Department, we were able to keep offices open even though couldn't have public come in, et cetera. There was a lot that they needed to do to keep things, to keep the government running. Basically, I wouldn't say normal, because it certainly has not been normal, but to keep our government running. And again, it's not the program part of Park and Rec that, that we're looking at in my comments, but I think we need to take also into consideration the Board of Finances. I would take it as a promise that if more funding is needed for Park and Rec programs, that that funding be found, and like other people have commented, as the weather starts to get warmer, there's lots and lots of people going outside. After being inside a lot for the winter, especially people who had to work from home, kids who had to do school from home, et cetera. I commend our, our Board of Ed to on keeping in-person school going as best they could, because that, I think, is really important. So if we can get this budget passed, I think it would be a good thing for our town. I don't think we need to do more cuts. And again, if we can keep from cutting out of the ones that usually get tough, like Park and Rec and the Senior Center, I think that would be good. Thank you.
Dion, I, I see Mr. Gallagher with his hand up. I don't.
Okay, but we have Brad Coats next, and then we'll get Mr. Gallagher. Brad, you need to unmute.
Okay, did I unmute?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, um, I just as a, a point of discussion.
What is your address?
I'm sorry, Brad Coats, one Fairchild Drive. Okay?
Uh huh.
Great. Um, I just want to read section C-ten, two A from the Town Charter, um, and I'm gonna read it in its entirety. It's a couple of sentences. "At such time and in such manner as the Board of Finance may require, every agency and department supported wholly or in part by town revenues or for which a specific appropriation is or may be made, shall submit to the Board of Selectmen an itemized estimate of the expenditures to be made by that agency and all the revenues other than town appropriations to be received by it or for use during the ensuing fiscal year. The estimates shall be accompanied by such other reports and information as the Board of Finance may require." Now, I get that some folks choose to interpret that as saying that you can just roll it all up, and that's fine. Others believe, others believe that the individual department revenues should be provided as part of the public discussion, just as the individual department expenditures are. I'm gonna just say that regardless of whether the charter means what it says or how some people are choosing to interpret it, I find it outrageous that there is any pushback on providing this kind of breakout for public review. Whether or not it is intentional, it creates the stench of hiding stuff, and that is inappropriate in our budget deliberations. I urge folks to include the revenue breakout for departments that have revenue so the public can understand it. We just heard from Pat this evening for the first time that the impact on Parks and Rec, taking $100,000 out of Parks and Rec is going to take $120,000 in revenue out of Parks and Rec. That seems to be a $20,000 hit for $100,000, $100,000 potential savings. Not a good plan. Wish we had that information a lot earlier so that we could all be discussing that as opposed to this evening. Second point, when I ran multimillion-dollar businesses, and I've run several, and we hit hard times, and Lord knows we did, we had to cut back expenses. We had offered choices usually about whether folks wanted to flatten or reduce pay to revert layoffs. My question is, has the town made a serious effort to negotiate reductions in raises or to find other reductions in expenses until the economy and jobs recover? I'll point out that at one point, we had approximately 10% of the town out of work during the pandemic. Patch just released a report showing that Fairfield County business bankruptcies were twice as many in 2020 as in 2019. That's not total bankruptcies, just businesses. Does the revenue forecast reflect a potential drop in revenues from lost businesses? That's my question. Thank you.
Uh, let me reply on, on, on one front, Brad, and then I'll ask Bob Kozlowski to address the second point. I want to thank you for reading the Charter section. And I think it's self-explanatory, right? It says, "At such time and in such manner as the Board of Finance may require", then this certain information is to be presented. I would argue that if somebody sat through all of our meetings, and I know that's difficult to do, we know it's difficult to do, the members of the Board of Finance, those pieces of information were discussed and presented as required by the Board of Finance. And I think you should feel comfortable that the majority, right? It was a seven, nothing, seven, zero unanimous decision to move this to public hearing for discussion based on lots of review of what the departments were telling us as to revenue. And frankly, there's just not that many departments that generate revenue. So I just want to make it clear that the Charter is, one doesn't need to be a lawyer to read it, it might help, but it's pretty clear in that the Board of Finance complied completely with the Charter in spirit and in letter. As to your question about, did the town consider cuts and the like? I would just turn that over to Bob K. at this point.
So when we prepare the revenue estimates for all the departments, which were included in, um, open gov presentations to the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, we also, on a monthly basis, review all of the various income categories, the revenue categories. And there are certain categories that we're seeing right now, like building and zoning is up 105% as of February, over and above what we budgeted last year. That trend appears to be continuing. When we look at interest income, we budgeted 500,000, we're only at around 50,000. So that's on the downside, because interest rates currently are very low. Collections, real estate collections continue to, um, be on target with last year. In fact, they're about 1.3% higher than last year's collection rate. So, um, we take all of these items into consideration for each one of the departments that have revenue, and those estimates, like I said, are recorded in Open Gov, and we calculate what the need is for the real estate taxes. So, um, whatever's happening on the outside as far as, uh, building permits, conveyance taxes with the sale of homes, I mean, all of that's, uh, not town aid roads, but conveyance taxes right now are right around 100%, and it's only eight months into the year. So, um, again, you know, we do take everything into consideration and, um, you know, I, I think the revenue estimate at this point is fairly consistent.
Thank you.
So Phil Gallagher next, and then Jennifer Larson will get to you, okay? Phil, you're gonna need to unmute yourself.
Is, is there any way we can help?
Yeah, well, it's not letting me.
Dion, I just sent him a message that says, "Ask to unmute," or the host has asked you to unmute.
Yeah, but.
Hey, hey, Phil, look down in the lower left corner for the little microphone symbol. If there's a red line through it, click the microphone and it should turn you on. You see it?
It's not letting me.
Yeah, you can't, uh, you can't, you can't turn his mic on for you.
Phil, try holding down the spacebar while you talk. That will temporarily unmute you.
Phil, we're not able to hear you. There you go, there you go.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a man of the last century, so I have difficulty sometimes. I was unmuted earlier. Where was it?
What's your address?
Oh, fifteen Sunset Hill Road.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want to make a couple gentle, uh, observations. I appreciate the, the work of the boards, having served on three different boards over 28 years' time. I understand that the amount of time put into it. I remember the, the meeting we had last year, you know, when, which was at the beginning, basically the first month of the COVID, and, you know, there was different people who wanted to add more money to the budget, but as time went on, it, the, the problem became much more serious. And, and that's one thing I, I would want to address, because I, I read the other day that 43% of the population is still suffering economic effects of the COVID over the last year. Now, I'm not one of them. I'm a retired civil servant, and I'm still, still drawing my pension. I never was affected economically, socially, yes. As people who work for the town or schools system were not affected. So I think those people, we have to remember with increases that there are people who are still suffering. I still, I did a lot of walking over the COVID and around, around the village, and I still sticks in my mind of the person I met who lost two jobs in one day. One job she got her benefits from, and the other one, and she brought about a little extra income that helped her pay her rent, I suppose. But there are many people like them, and they're still suffering from the, from the effects of the COVID. Uh, it's good to see people out exercising, but a lot of them are exercising out in the daytime because they're still not working study. So I think we still can't forget the people who are still suffering from the effects of the last year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Now I have Jen Larson.
Hi, um, I want to thank the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I'm speaking as Jen Larson, private citizen, not Board of Ed member.
And what's your address?
I'm sorry, 128 Grassley Plain Street.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm a little upset with the cut to the Parks and Rec budget. I am a teacher. I work with young students. I see the effects that kids are having, and adults also, but I definitely see the effects on children not having those social outlets that have been cut. And the, I know that you say you will find the funding, and we've seen this over and over again as a member of the school board. I've seen it, and as a private citizen, I've seen it. We'll put those teachers back next year. We'll replace that money next year, you know, and it never happens. It happens over and over and over again. It happens over and over and over again. So it makes me very nervous to think that our kids could actually still be suffering the effects of COVID. And adults as well, who are, have been shut off from, from other social outlets that Parks and Rec allows them to get. And social emotional being is so important to everyone. And I really hate to see people suffer because of that. So I really wish you would reconsider and rethink about that in the big scheme of our town and our community and the service that that provides to them. My other point is that, you know, there was a cut to the Board of Education. They're going to talk about the amount of employees that we have. They talk about how many employees, that the fact that they're getting raises when other people are losing their jobs. A lot of these things are contractual. The raises are contractual. The amount of employees we have is definitely relevant compared to the amount of students that we have in Bethel, which has been growing when every other town has been decreasing for years now. So, you know, you have to take all that into account. You can't just sit there and say, "We have this many employees." Well, yeah, we have that many employees for a reason. We have that many students that need that many employees, especially during COVID, especially when children are suffering because of, you know, the importance of school being open. And Bethel has done a phenomenal job and I give Christine Carver a lot of credit for keeping our schools open when every other town was closed. I work in Danbury. I did not return to school until January. Bethel schools were open. Our kids were getting into the building. They were seeing their friends. They were seeing their teachers and they were learning. And it makes a big difference. So if you're not supporting that and supporting our schools properly, you won't receive that benefit in the future. You'll end up like Danbury with our schools closed until January and still on hybrid. So think about this when you're thinking about where your money goes and what it does for your community. You know, they say the importance of schools being open, the governor wants schools open, the government wants schools open, the president wants schools open, everybody wants schools open. We have to have employees to have schools open. So, you know, we need to take that all into account. So please, when you're looking at this budget, take all that into account and think about those employees and what they're doing with their time. Because as a teacher myself, I know what my time has been and what I have given to my job over this COVID period. Because believe me, the amount of hours they've gotten out for the pay that I've gotten is not equivalent. My workload has more than doubled. And so it is so for every Bethel teacher also. So they may not have gotten a pay cut and they may be getting a small raise. But what they're putting in is not equivalent to what they're getting out. So just keep that all in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Is there anybody else? So we have, we have Greg Henry again. I just want to make sure that we don't have anybody else that hasn't had an opportunity to speak. All right. Greg, if you'll unmute yourself.
Thank you. I had one question that I wanted to ask. Maybe you can direct it to the right person. The, you spoke in the opening statement with regards to Park and Rec about not wanting the residents to be overbilled. Could you, could you tell me that $100,000? Could you tell me the impact on the residents that, that the quote unquote savings by not having that in the budget upfront and billing the residents?
Yeah, Bob or Brad, I think what Greg is asking is if we put the 100,000 back in and assume like last year, it isn't, there isn't offsetting revenue, what is the impact to the budget?
You know, on what we always calculate, the $217,000 home, the 13923 would go up to 15193 for $12.70 difference.
$12.70 difference, annual, annual difference to the average taxpayer.
That's right.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? We have Brad Coats again, but Bill Foster has his hand raised and he hasn't spoken yet.
Okay, my turn?
Yes.
I guess this would be to Bob.
So Bill Foster, will you just tell me your address?
I'm sorry, 55 Ridgedale Road.
Thank you.
And also, I'm a member of the Board of Ed, so nobody should construe whatever I say is on behalf of the Board of Ed, just one particular member of the Board of Ed and a citizen of Bethel. And the question, I guess, is to Bob Kozlowski. We've talked around this here right now. Bob, given your projections of revenue for the present fiscal year, will we meet your projections for revenue, one? And two, do you foresee any reason why, given your projections of revenue for next year, that we would or would not meet those projections?
I think real estate wise, we're going to be fine. We budget 98.7% collection rate. And like I said before, we're probably 1.3% ahead of last year's total as of the end of February. As far as certain revenue accounts, we are down with the senior center, with the park and rec, with interest income. Those are three of the main items. We're up in other areas like conveyance taxes and building permits. So the other type of revenue, we're going to be a little shy, maybe to the extent of about 500,000, 550,000. But our collection rate will probably exceed 98.7 and will make up that difference. So we're going to be fine as far as the revenue is going to be in total when you look at everything.
So it's pretty much a wash for this year?
It, it could be a wash. It may be a little surplus, but it's not going to be a tremendous surplus.
Okay. Do you foresee, given where we are in time, that you would guess it would be about the same next year?
We'll cut back on some of the items right now. We cut back on park and rec revenue. We cut back on the interest because interest rates are not moving at this point. So I think we're going to be, you know, and the collection rate historically has always been at least 98.7 or a little bit higher. So I think we're going to, I'm hoping we're on a mark next year.
Okay, so this may not be a fair question for you. I have been told that in the January quarterly tax revenue, real estate payments, there were only seven people asked for a deferment. Do you know if that's true?
That's what the tax collector had said to us, yes.
Only seven people? Okay.
Only seven.
Okay. Where I'm coming from is there, I think the Board of Finance is not, they're, they're looking in the rearview mirror. Not to you, Bob, just in general. They're looking in their rearview mirror and they're not looking out in, into the windshield, so to speak. There's a tremendous amount of money coming from the feds to Bethel and every other citizen and community and state in Connecticut. $1,400 a piece to a lot of people, $300 additional unemployment revenue. Revenue to people who are behind in their, in their rent, behind in their utilities, behind in their, in their, in their mortgage payments. And so the question I guess would be to Dr. Carver and to Matt. At today, do you have any idea how much money you're getting and where you're going to spend it from the feds?
Do you want me to answer first?
Why don't you answer first, Dr. Carver, because you're off mute.
Okay. So yes, we do have an indication. We just found out last Friday, the second source of revenue. So as you know, we did receive two grants over the past year and we, we are anticipated to receive two more. One in the process we are applying for now and is referred to as S R two. And, and the latest stimulus package, which I refer to as S R three, but I do believe it has another name. The revenue that we are anticipated in S R two is approximately 1.0. Terry has probably the exact numbers, 1.189.
Yeah, 1.198.
Right. And then S R three, we haven't got the final calculations, but it's, it should be close to between 2.6 to 3 million. The monies are very specifically, they're, they're intended to be used very specifically for a couple of different reasons. One is any cost that we might incur next year related to COVID, just like we did this year to improve, you know, PPE, our mitigation strategies, any types of extra cleanings that we might need. Because we do anticipate that there will be impact to COVID on the schools next year. For, and the biggest reason will be that children will not be vaccinated by that point. And then also with the new S R three grant, it is also very specifically, there, there's actually specific percentages that need to be allocated for what's called learning loss. And, and so a lot of those will be to address academic gaps that our students may have incurred over this, over the past school year and also social emotional needs that they might have, as many speakers commented on. We are seeing a huge impact of the pandemic on our children, both academically and socially emotionally. So a majority of that funding will be to support those. Our operating budget that we presented to the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance is, and Board of Selectmen is simply to maintain our current program. So we'll use that, we'll utilize that grant money to address the other academic needs that our children have as a result of COVID.
Okay, through you, Mr. Chair. If that's all right?
Sure.
So the information on the town side is a little less specific than what Dr. Carver has received on the school side. We will be getting in excess of 1.9 million. And I say in excess because the, the American Rescue Plan Act allocates money to state governments, county governments and local governments. And seeing as how in the state of Connecticut, we have no functioning county governments, they're just statistical zones. The amount of money that is allocated to Fairfield County will be prorated on the basis of population and will trickle down to the towns. And we don't have a final number of that yet. But the direct allocation to towns is 1.9 million. Beyond that, we are still waiting for guidance from Treasury, Department of U.S. Treasury. They, we know what we can't use it for. We cannot use it for tax cuts. We cannot use it for pensions, to pay off pension obligations. And aside from that, the direction, the directive is cover costs, any costs related to COVID, including loss of revenue. If there's a loss of revenue into the town coffers, that is permissible. Certain types of economic development are permissible and certain capital projects are permissible. And we've been a little hesitant to, you know, go charging down the road on those things yet because as Bob Kozlowski pointed out to me just this morning, there was an article that said the law also has a clawback provision. So if you use it inappropriately, you will be audited and have to give it back. So we're, along with several tens of thousands of other local governments in the United States, where we have a long list of things that we could use it for. We just want to make sure that we're on solid ground before we commit to those. One of those would be the HVAC systems that need to be replaced at Bethel High School. Because the, the replacement, of course, would carry filtration equipment that would protect the kids from, from any COVID or any kind of a viral exposure. And there are some other buildings that have similar needs. Also, the, some renovations here at Town Hall in our emergency operations center. You know, the Town Hall and when, when people are out of their homes due to hurricane damage or whatever, this becomes the primary shelter in town and there are some safety, health and safety related issues that need to be done here. So these are possibilities. We, because economic development is, is included in the usage. The issue that Mr. Schweitzer addressed a little while ago on sidewalks that connect to the downtown area and put, put people within walking distance of town safely. Those are possible. We're waiting for some clarification on that. So that's what I have so far. We are, you know, moving ahead with some ideas on this, but anxiously awaiting some clarification from Treasury Department. And we'll put that out as soon as we get it.
Thank you, Dr. Carver. Thank you, Matt.
Can I make one more point?
Sure.
Matt brought it up and I think he should, we should seriously consider it because it's already in the potential, in the budget, is the HVAC consideration in the high school, that that, that's where that money, some of that money should be spent.
That, that is, we're 100% sure that can happen. So just want you to know about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you had your hand raised next and then I don't see it now. Do you not want to speak?
Yeah, I do. Just, I'm thinking about a couple of things. So Nick can go.
Okay. All right. So next we have Nick Hoffman. Nick, you're gonna need to unmute.
Yep. Well, my set. Thank you, Dion. Nick Hoffman, 163 Plum Trees Road. Yeah, I want to speak on a couple of things. I too am a Board of Ed member, so it's nice to see my colleagues here showing up. Yeah, it, one of the frustrating things for my entire time on the Board of Ed is kind of the myth of, of the spending in education in Bethel. And at the end of the day, numbers are numbers and you can easily quantify them statistically. And Bethel is in the lower quartile of spending in the entire state of Connecticut. So there's 75% of the communities in the state of Connecticut spend more money on students than Bethel does. And our DURG, which is our demographic reference group, so the towns we're most economically similar to, none of which are in Fairfield County. We're 22 of 26 in spending. So essentially, everybody else spends more than we do. And we nearly outperform every one of those other schools. We're on par with Reading in our performance and they spend $10,000 more a year per child. So it's frustrating every year when we deliberate over our budgets and we come to this point of the year and we essentially get nickled and dimes. And we, we're kind of in this spot where we, we need staff in a crisis situation. And because things have been poked and pulled away for years and years and years, it, it's, it's going to degrade the quality of education. And the greatest irony of that is we're onboarding to essentially brand new schools. We're probably in the most significant real estate boom in the history of our town, something that we haven't been able to recover from since the last economic collapse. There's development on Vale Road that sat idle for a decade. All those houses sold and they're filled. If you go on Benedict, brand new houses, people aren't moving to Connecticut to retire. So every one of those houses is going to have a kid or two or three. So we didn't even know how many kids are going to be walking through our doors in September. And we're being told what we're projecting for, the group that spent hundreds of hours this past year preparing for how do we recover from a pandemic, that we don't know what we're talking about. It's, it's pretty frustrating. We've actually put together a really nice tool. It's on the Bethel Board of Education website. It's our dashboard that measures all of our financial metric, performance metrics, the school construction pieces. And then additionally, I can't wrap my mind around the $100,000 cut to Parks and Rec. You know, I mean, just from a human perspective, you know, we've literally all been quarantined from one another. Like this is the, the organization that brings us together and we're going to, we're going to limit their resources. I live across the street from the front property and the volume of use has been amazing. And I couldn't thank the Bethel Forest Association enough that they take it voluntarily. The Parks and Rec provides the insurance, but it's, it's a resource that has become invaluable. You know, when we look at things about the mental health epidemic that's going to follow this epidemic, the, the deaths associated with the disease and the correlation between heart, heart disease and obesity, that's what Parks and Rec does. It creates those opportunities for physical exercise and for human connection. You know, so to look at it coldly as a number and say, "Maybe we'll give it back to you later." I gotta agree with Jen. The history of this board isn't that. You know, I've watched Captain Pugner, now Chief Pugner, for the last four years, ask for four cars every year they get cut. Now we're at a point where you want to cut another one, but the math just doesn't work out. You know, like one of the cars is going to break down, then he's going to have to come back and ask for one. There's got to be a deeper trust in the professionals and the other boards in terms of the work we do. You know, we chase our tails and we can't get out of our own way. You know, there's amazing things happening in Bethel. You know, there's a reason that there's not an empty storefront on Greenwood Avenue. I walk it two, three times a week. You know, people have rallied around our restaurants. You know, people have rallied around their restaurants and made sure they change their eating habits so we can support them. You know, this isn't the time for our government to turn our back on us. You know, often we hear that it's not just the $6,000, it's the $27 on top of it. I think another pretty stunning number for Bethel is about 30% of our student population. It's free and reduced lunch. But if you look at our, our affordable housing, we don't even qualify in the state. So those numbers don't make sense. But it means there's families who chose this town to live in this town because they want their children to have access to that education because they know that's going to be the difference maker. For the rest of their lives. And we're deciding that, you know, a, another $100 a year is too much for them. I grew up in a family like that. My parents wouldn't shutter at another $100 a year to ensure that their kids have the best possible education that they can afford. So I just asked the board to reconsider, look a little deeper at, at the numbers. And, and maybe expand your orbit and talk to some people who aren't pursuing you. Pursue some of the other people who aren't going to call and complain. The vocal minority is easy to be heard. It's a silent majority. That stuff to be found.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else that hasn't had an opportunity to speak? All right, we've got Brad Coats again. Brad, you're gonna need to unmute. Oh, and Nick, I'm sorry. What's your address?
163 Plum Trees.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dion. I've got three follow-up questions. I'm going to address them obviously through Bob and Bob, please. Distribute them as you see fit. One, can you share the current town unemployment rate? And any projections for where that's going to be over the next year? Unemployed folks are obviously struggling. They're going to have to deal with any increase that, that we see. Second question, has the town or the school department made any formal or informal effort? To negotiate any reductions and raises with employees that are under contract? And number three, while I am absolutely not in favor of an increase in the budget. This year in the middle of a pandemic, I have done some back of the napkin calculations. And I'm, I'm a little concerned about fairness perhaps. It looks to me like the schools represent roughly 60% of the overall budget. If you take the $100,000 deal from the 1% fund and, and look at it as part of the trims that the school system's been. Asked to take, it looks like they're getting 75% of the requests, the request reductions. That seems to be disproportionate in terms of how the reductions are being allocated. I'm wondering if my back of the napkin calculations are accurate. And if they are accurate, is that fair?
Thanks, Brad. I can just give you some insight on the first one. I only because I happened to look at the state of Connecticut Department of Labor Statistics earlier today. As of January 31st of this year. The unemployment rate in Bethel was 7.3%. As to the second question regarding town or school request to. I'll just say renegotiate wages. I'll, I'll turn that over to Matt, intern Matt for town and Dr. Carver for schools.
Okay, I, I was trying to look up some data. What was the, what was the question you needed me to answer? I'm sorry.
Brad's second question, and Brad, correct me if I don't get this right, but your question was, has the town or the school. System made an effort to negotiate or renegotiate to reduce salaries, wages, benefits?
The answer is no. Town, a town is not. I would just ask people to keep in mind that. The wage increases in, if you want to accuse me of parsing words, that's fine. I can take that criticism, but what employees normally get is cost of living increases. I, I don't like the word raises because we don't really have a merit raise program. But any cost of living increase that they bargain for through their unions. Also is accompanied by increases of what they pay out of pocket for their insurance. So there's, there's a, there's a balancing act that goes on there. And no, in the, in the present environment, our, our employees are working harder than ever. Anybody who's been to the Saturday morning COVID clinic has seen. Our health director, our park and rec director, our fire marshal and emergency operations director. Working six and seven days a week for months, putting this stuff together. So now they are non-union people, but the same applies to many of the union people who are volunteering their time in there. So I, I don't really, I understand that the, that, you know, some people have lost income. We have reduced expenses in many other areas to try to compensate for that. You'll notice that on the town. Operating side of the budget, it's a 0.96% increase. We worked very hard on that. I've lowered. Our expectations on road resurfacing and will replace those funds with grants to give taxpayers a break. But I, I don't feel comfortable trying to balance a budget on the backs of employees and I understand that people may disagree with me on that. But people who work as hard as that should at least stay even with inflation. I, I feel very, very strongly that that is appropriate. So that's, that's where I stand on that with the town.
Thank you, Dr. Carver, with respect to the school system.
Yeah, no, we have not asked for our employees to renegotiate any contracts. I think Jen Larson spoke eloquently about the reasons why, and I wholeheartedly agree. Our teachers are working harder than they ever have in their entire careers. And our custodians, our school staff, who by the way, are also volunteering on Saturday mornings and the clinics to help out. So I feel that in this year, we've probably asked our employees to do more than they ever have. And so, no, we have not.
Okay, thank you. And maybe to Bob Kay and or Brad, Brad Haring. The question regarding fairness and whether or not the increases and or actions taken are proportionate to the. Or in line with the proportion of the budget comprised by either the town or the school.
My, my reaction is I, I think they are. I think it's a fair budget. We worked hard to, we start in November, December timeframe to put this budget together. And, you know, looking at all of the departments. And the numbers that we were able to, and like Matt has mentioned. We did a, you know, we sit down and we talk to the department heads ahead of time before it goes to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. And we pair back the budgets if, you know, we think that there's room to cut it back and we have like on the roads. Which was mentioned before, the original estimate was over a million dollars, you know. And we have a little over $400,000, $500,000 right now in the budget. And we're hoping to get some grants to, to cover the, not maybe the full million, but. Close to that amount of money. And then with the other departments, you know, we work hard to try to make sure that they're on par with prior years. So. I, I, I think at this point it's a fair budget and Brad may have some other comments that, you know, he can add to.
The town budget actually from the requested has been cut over $600,000. Even if you don't include the Board of Ed Maintenance account. So there has been a significant cut, like Bob Kozowski said. A good chunk of that was the road construction account. But the town requested budget has been cut over $600,000 from the requested by both boards.
So Brad Colts, I, I think that answers your question is, do you agree?
Sorry, I, I had muted. Yeah, no, those are, those are absolutely. Fair and complete answers. I do have a follow-up question for Dr. Carver. Or anyone else, or, or maybe it's for Melanie. During the last Board of Finance discussions, when $400,000, excuse me, it looks like it was more like. 500, when you look at the 1% reduction was announced. Do you have where those cuts are going to come from worked out? I haven't seen it. Excuse me. I haven't seen anything on that.
We do not, we do not at this point have them identified. We have been working on it. And just to reiterate, similar to the town side, we begin our budgets. In November at the school level and they're built up from there. And we go through a lot of iterations and make a lot of reductions along the way. And, and talk about reallocation of resources. And so by the time we actually bring a budget to the Board of Education. We've usually looked long and hard at it. And when we bring it to the Board of Finance, we've looked at it again. And the Board of Education has had a minimum of four workshops to look very carefully at it. We have not. It, it's a significant number. And so we, we have not identified exactly where those reductions will come yet. And we're also aware of the grants, which will be able to target learning loss and a few other COVID-related expenses. And so we really, it's a different kind of year. We're looking at the whole. Picture and, and going to make the best decisions that we can under Dr. Carver's guidance.
Thank you, Terry. I don't want to run much past my time, but fairly soon we're going to go to. Town meeting and, and ask folks to approve this thing. Do you think that we'll have a sense by town meeting of, of where the $400,000. Reduction in the request might come from? To be critical to people making informed decisions about the impact of that larger reduction. And I'm, I'm just concerned that it's a lot, as you point out, it's a lot of money. I mean, it represents a large percentage of the requested. And I have absolutely no idea where those dollars would be taken out of from the request. You know, you, you made a very. Detailed presentation about why you needed that money. So. I'm just wondering if you think by town meeting, you'll be able to share with, with the public. Where you think those cuts are going to come from?
Brad, I think if I could answer that, Terry, I think that the Board of Ed is, is going to have a special meet board. Special Board of Ed meeting on April 1st. And we're going to, as Terry said, we, we need to look at this holistically. Because we are receiving additional revenue to, to, to deal with some of the, the issues related to COVID. So I think that they will have a better sense at that meeting, which I believe is prior to the town meeting. Where we might consider taking the reductions.
It, it's, what is it? It's four days prior to the.
That is correct.
Yeah.
That is correct, but we are getting information about the grants ongoing. And we, and we have to have, we have to have our grant application. Well, it just got extended actually till April 19th. But we have to have the application in. And as I, as Terry and I will both kind of reinforce that. We have to look at it holistically because we have, yes, we have the reductions in the budget. But we also, we need to consider the bigger picture and how we're going to utilize that grant money in the, the way that it will benefit our students the most. So we want to look at it in a holistic manner.
And Brad, I'd like to add that behind the scenes, working this through for a number of years. Knowing the full amount of the cut versus pieces of cuts. The approach changes. I'm, I'm just being very honest. The approach changes as to where you, where you have to cut and how to cut. And sometimes we've had years where then the budget fails and there's an additional reduction. And, and sometimes if it's a larger number, you have to almost go back to the drawing board. All over again and, and rethink your entire approach. So. There are many years where we don't, we have a sense of where we may be trimming and cutting. But we don't usually finalize the changes until once we have an approved budget. I'm just being very honest about that.
As maybe the schools will be able to replace some of the. Reduced request from other, other sources that perhaps the town would not be able to. Is, is that? Is that a, a fair kind of interpretation of, of what you're sort of saying? Because it's kind of what it sounds like.
No, I'm just, I'm saying in a regular year. The, the amount of the cut changes the approach to what you really have to do. Because obviously 85% of our expenditures are, are people and benefits, salaries and benefits. So depending on the size of the cut and the approach you really have to take to make, make the reductions. These, some of these grants coming in from the federal government. Are, they are for a few years, but they are temporary. So again, you have to be very cautious about. Designing the programs you're going to use the grants for. To address the learning loss and try to pull us back from the days of this pandemic. However, you also have to be aware that you're not causing a cliff. That then you, you're just going to expect the town to assume. So it, it's. It's, it's a, it's a.
Very complex.
It's complex, but having this money is a wonderful thing. We're, we're extremely grateful. For the federal grants. We just don't want to do anything that long-term, we want to make the right decision so that long-term. We achieve the best results we can for the schools. But then also good results long-term for the financial health of Bethel.
Thank you, and I apologize if I put you a little bit on the spot with that.
No, it's, it's, that is the crux of the challenge that, that we're looking at. And of course, Dr. Carver and, and, and Dr. Brooks and, and the administrative, the educational administrative team. Are, are keened in on the learning loss and the educational pieces of this. We do have other needs that are COVID-related and that maybe will be used well. And then avoid having to use some of those funds from town funds in the long, but there's just, it's, it's an opportunity. But we want to structure it in the best way possible, like I said, for. The benefit for the children and then also the benefit for the long-term health of Bethel.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Dion, next speaker?
Yeah, we don't have anybody with their hand raised right now. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. If there's somebody who cannot. Cannot like raise your hand if you're having trouble doing that, but you're wanting to speak, go ahead and unmute yourself. I think we could give you an opportunity to do it that way. Just announce who you are. Nancy, Nancy wants to say. Something else, so.
I, I actually just have a question, which something that came up. Very early when we were talking about the dates. And the date of the town meeting and the location being the Field House. And is there going to, there was there, did you say there was a limit on the number of people that could attend?
No.
Okay. So that, that could be open to anybody. And then another question, which I think. In the past, the. Board of Selectmen meetings before COVID and everything were always recorded. So will this get recorded? So people can?
This public hearing, this public hearing, everything's being recorded.
So the town meeting will also be recorded so that people. And if people are, are uncomfortable attending in person, can they submit questions or whatever in writing? Because I think last year we could. Because we had to do this whole thing with the Zoom and the box and people who weren't able to attend were able to email somebody something, but it was that a one-time thing? Or is that?
That was for the public hearing, I believe.
Yeah.
You're, you're, you're thinking of last year's public hearing, but there was, there was no town meeting.
Right, right.
The Board of, the Board of Finance, as the, as Mr. Chairman has said many times to their extreme discomfort. Had the responsibility to pass a budget. There was, there was no referendum and there was no town meeting, which is different. We're going to have both. Oh, and to your question about the venue, I know there's no limit on the number of voters that are, that can come into it. I just said that there's adequate room for as many as we need. So.
So if we, we normally have about 120 to 140 people attend that town meeting. I've asked the, the school and park and rec officials to, who are going to help us with the setup, to plan for 200, just to make sure we're totally covered. If, if it looks like there's more, we'll be ready for more. That's not a problem.
Okay, thanks.
So Dion.
It doesn't look like we have anybody else with any other questions.
Okay, well then let's wrap up tonight's meeting. From here, just so folks understand, from here, there will be a special Board of Finance meeting tomorrow at 7 o'clock. At which point the Board of Finance will deliberate, taking in the comments made tonight. And we will come to a recommendation for a budget to be discussed and presented at the annual town meeting. Recall the annual town meeting. I know it's, it's repetitive, but the annual town meeting will be on Monday, April 5th in the Bethel Field House. The, the referendum, you know, at, at the town meeting, residents can vote, taxpayers can vote to decrease the proposal, cannot vote to increase it. They can vote to decrease the proposal. And then secondly, send that proposal to the town referendum, which again is on Tuesday, April 20th. So that's a wrap for tonight. Again, echoing the thoughts of, of all the board members. Thank you very much. The members of the, of the town for your comments tonight. Thank you. Have a good rest of the evening and stay safe.